We had it.
Knowing if you can tell in part they talk at the same time.
Yeah, they're wired to lie.
We are not wired to lie.
Kind of a different.
I think called worse.
Those are very sad. Okay. Katie, do you have anything else?
Yeah, a couple of things, just to update what I've been working on. The easements are all out, East Main, I got one back so far. Only five total, and all but one are temporary, so we shouldn't have any issues there, I wouldn't think, getting those done fairly quickly. Special assessments, those are all done over to the county. The, what else have I been working? We decided to do a short little contract with Paul's Tree Care, you guys approved a bid from him. So I'm working to get that to you, hopefully in November, after I send it to him to look over. Of course, with the trash contract. And another thing, and Personnel Manual has unfortunately kind of been put on the back burner. Jason and I were so on our to-do list to get that finalized, he had some suggestions too, so we will get that to you sooner, hopefully rather than later. One last thing I've been working on is the ordinance that actually covers city attorney duties and salary. October 1st was my five years I've been here, so, which prompted me to look into that. And that ordinance actually is not really reflective of all the duties. So I'm kind of working on that and changing that, and what is covered in my salary, what's not. So I'll be bringing a proposal to you for a new ordinance there. It's not going to change anything I'm doing now, it's just getting it correct in writing, what I'm doing. And then possibly looking at a little bit of a pay increase because of all that we've had going on the past few years. Turned out I probably was supposed to be billing by the hour for some of that, and I wasn't, which is my own fault, I guess, but, so I'll be bringing that to you for you guys to consider.
Congrats on five years.
Yeah, thanks. Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it has, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Jason, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. Basically, the pilot testing for the water is going to start October 12th. Talked to him today, so it looks like that's getting lined up pretty well, barring any last second roadblocks. Then it should be about ninety days from there to have a report, so, you know, that would put us right around January to have that. He's feeling pretty good about that. THM, a little overage we keep getting all the time, we actually got, we actually had a conference call last week, I got canceled, we're having it this Friday, and see if we can get the new process. So then maybe we'll get flagged, which will probably take some heat off all of us and provide safer water for citizens. The, K-14 project, you know, as you can see, if you've been out there, it's pretty close to being done. They're getting the asphalt poured, or it's pretty much ready to drive on. There's a little bit of erosion issues down the, getting my bearings here, the east side, that east ditch, kind of where all the water comes from, obviously it doesn't help if we've had such a wet year, so it's really want to cut out the bottom of that ditch. And since there's a SWIP on there, basically a SWIP is an erosion control plan. It's really, gets really nasty if the EPA finds out you're not following it. K-Dog got their hand smacked a few years ago, so they're super strict about it too. So what that means is it really kind of ties our hands as far as getting the project complete without having that erosion mitigated. So there's some options that Stuart's looking at to make sure that gets held at the bottom of that ditch. And I think even long-term, I mean, if you get grassy in there, it seems like the bulk of it, there's much water that comes through there, I can see where you could have problems. If you get grass in there, it's going to be pretty soft for a few years, getting packed, packed down there, so I'd rather fix it right. What that means is there might be a little bit of additional cost, but again, hopefully it's a little cost now, and not a lot. Every couple of years fixing that ditch, since we got this close. So more report on that later, but we did meet on site. A pre-con meeting for the East Main is set for October 20th. If you'd like to go to those, I'll let you know the exact time, but they're always kind of fun. In the railroad, I did make contact with them, I do have, they hire us, talk to the person at their office, but gotta keep late frogging up the chain. The issue is, you know, trying to figure out where it was left off at the last time, so, least time.
Not done.
Yeah, well, yeah, at least time. We're making a little bit of progress on that.
At least they took your call.
Yeah, well, yeah, I just told them, I kept looking at the messages, I was like, I'm going to try to call tomorrow. Try to call tomorrow, and they must have got sick of that, I guess, so. But, the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, you know, obviously we have that vote for the ballot question. There is going to be, you know, a little bit of the cost of the city to do that, whether yes or no. Alicia Mitchell County kind of approached me, and I was curious, they've kind of prepared kind of an informational sheet that they were wondering, you know, if it needs to be massaged, obviously. If we're interested in throwing that in our utility bill, just kind of explain what the ballot question is. So I kind of, this is what they've put together so far. The issue is, we kind of need to know probably mid-October because of the date it has to be to accompany the stuff, because obviously we outsource our utility bills, so. You know, I guess, I've seen you need to sit here, read every part of everything, but, you know, this is something that kind of got cleared from the legal standpoint, through Katie, say, hey, there's nothing wrong with telling people how to vote, which is kind of more informational, how we got here, obviously LMC's role in it. You know, is that okay to throw in there? Because whether people vote yes or no, we want at least to be educated, not wasting a couple of grand, put on the ballot, and, you know, have a clue there's vote yes or no, it's whatever. So, didn't know what your thoughts were on that.
I've actually, we had this up in the work already.
Yeah, I know it's been around town. It's going to cost us about three hundred bucks to throw it in the invoice, or the utility bill, however, that's pretty, probably darn cheaper than Manlin or Sills or anybody else, I mean, it's pretty cost effective, I'd say, for, you know, a thousand plus utility bills.
It's also really nice that the LMC is going to be tying on the Cancans, sort of, you know, the cattle coming out.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be quite a few different functions, you know, I, as I line, I can, you know, just, I didn't worry about it, you know, talked about it a little bit, so again, people can go form their own opinion. But we want to make sure they're not surprised when they get to the ballot box, saying, what's that? You know, I'd rather them, yes or no, I'd be confident in it.
People are asking questions too, I know I've been approaching a number of people.
So this is nice, and we're going to do a little bit of massaging with, I can't remember what community, has it on their website?
Edora.
Edora. So probably kind of more of that, there's a little bit, there's a few language in here that I'm not, Katie and I are comfortable with as far as, you know, not biased to a degree, you know, but we'll get that massaged and put out there. I think from LMC, that's fine, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just, you know.
Who can the media talk to as far as giving us a radio?
Yeah, it'd be great if Chad wanted to do a little community matters with Mayor, or Mayor and myself, or.
They're usually pretty good.
Yeah, leadership is probably Mallory Whitstraw.
Yeah, yep. Kind of get us all in the room.
Mark Paulin.
Mallory brings donuts, Mark donuts.
I'll bring coffee.
She, I believe, kind of speak credit to this part.
Well, because I know that when they.
No, but we'd be glad to do something like that.
You know, they said that they were going to be promoting this, you know, so.
Yeah, so this is kind of what they're doing, and they're doing those things, I know that they're supposed to be doing kind of a plan letter to the editor, you know, so they're kind of guerrilla style marketing as best they can, so.
So who is it that doesn't bring the donuts?
Mark.
Mark, no, I'm just teasing. Mark's never been on, Mallory always brings them.
But no.
But if he brought donuts, could he be on?
He can be on whether he brings donuts.
But no, on October 24th, that's the one I know of, when Cancana does her legislative update, Leadership of County is going to be presenting information right after that at Cattle's World. So that'll be a nice tie in the lines, obviously I've heard about that as well, so, they're definitely.
Yeah, so I think that's all of our roles, you know, again, whether you're a hundred percent for it or not, you can at least explain the question.
You need to tell me when you can come talk.
So, otherwise, I think that's about all I had, unless there's questions from the council board here, or anything, obviously, call me at any time, you know, whatever, fix or look at anything.
Could we have some of these maybe printed up, where they're also available?
That would be the, yeah, that's a great idea.
I have a question, my mind's fading out on the old age and everything here, but the K-14 project is having some erosion problems because of the water falling under the bridge?
So it's having erosion problems on that new ditch that they come, you know, down to that box culvert. So it's just, it's basically the collection of it down that ditch, and it's, because they had to reshape that ditch, it's just loose, so they have to get grass seed established there to control it.
Does that be an engineering problem?
Long-term?
No, I mean, it should work, right?
Well, yeah, no, it's working, it's just anytime you run water, I don't care what you do, over loose soil, it's going to erode, so.
But that's not working?
Well, just currently, yeah, it's not, I wouldn't say it's a design flaw, I would just say that it's a rainy year, loose earth, doesn't mix well. You know, if it was probably a normal construction season, they would have been able to get that established seated. And it's, it's a, it's kind of V-notch, it's basically a flat bond ditch, but obviously because of all that rain coming in, like, once grass is in there, it should be fine, because it is a nice wide bottom, so the velocity of the water should be low enough where it doesn't erode.
But we also have to realize that all that water comes from the technical company.
Yeah.
I mean, so there's a lot.
There's a lot of water coming, yeah, so, yeah. The good news is the water isn't going over the road.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, we'll take a little bit of erosion issue to solve. Yeah, so that's, that's all I had until the discussion.
Thank you. Next time on the agenda, the special areas, is the trash collection opt-out. You're putting up.
Yes, hopefully you saw my memo in there. Again, you know, kind of the end of the last meeting, Johnson's asked about the possibility of an opt-out. We, we're here tonight, we did meet together, just kind of discuss that from a staff perspective. And so that's kind of what I broke down here, was kind of the three options, at least in my mind, again, I passed into town case, they think of something different, but, you know, currently we don't allow the opt-out, it's not been our practice, you know, from a billing standpoint, it's easier for us to just do the whole kick, you know, kick and boot, I guess, whatever you want to say, like a better word. And then also, kind of the way the RFP was written, you know, again, this summer or whatever, it says all trash and whatnot, so, you know, kind of the assumption that if we bid on it, one, it was going to get all the trash. Kind of what they have stated, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but basically, currently it's fifteen dollars for, to pick up a recycling, curb-side recycling pickup. The proposed charge, if they were to allow opt-out, they have about a hundred or so, a hundred and fifty customers.
Hundred and fifteen here in Bloom.
Hundred and fifteen recycling customers currently, if you ever take, if they were allowed to opt-out, the cost would be about twenty-two dollars, roughly.
Twenty-one seventy.
Twenty-one seventy, okay, yeah, twenty-one seventy is what I'd come up with. You know, kind of what I compared them to is saying, hey, well, if we don't allow that, because it doesn't appear the language, we support that, we haven't done that in the past. The total, based on our new hauling price with the, with their charge, if somebody wanted to do recycling, it would be about twenty-eight ninety-five. So, my thought process is, you know, it'd still be cheaper than what their charge would have been with the fifteen dollars, you know, I was just comparing, I'm trying to find different ways to compare apples to apples, a little bit. You know, so, again, the second option there would be to not allow the opt-out, but, you know, however. Yes, sir.
My question is, how, how does this being different than what the RFP said, make it a problem for the city? Explain the RFP process.
Well, the RFP, there's not, the language in the first paragraph, from what I can interpret, hold on.
I have it too.
Nope. I don't know if I brought it. Yeah, it says all, all the garbage. To me, it's somewhat vague, but it does not really say some of the garbage, or.
Here, out here.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Speaking proposals, the individual or firm selected shall acquire to furnish equipment in place and start collecting, moving, dispose all the garbage, trash, and other waste materials from the residential units.
So if we don't stick to that, how's it bet on us?
Well, I guess that's where, I would assume Jamie's built his bid on all of it. You know, so if you're a contractor and it says, hey, you're only going to get fifty percent, you're probably going to bid different than if you're going to get a hundred percent or eighty percent. I mean, I don't know, that would be my.
Yeah, I, I see the only way that it's, that Jamie would have to agree to some sort of what we're doing. I mean, he's going to have to be on board, because we're all, we're all assuming that he placed a bid based on fourteen hundred and fifty residential pickups. So, there are some different things you can do, but again, he's going to have to be on board with it, was what it comes down to.
Just keep it up. I don't know, for what, for what it matters, our attorney looked over it, and he told us this from the start, when we first were looking at bidding on this, that this was his problem the whole, the whole time with this RFP, was that there wasn't anything really binding. So, that's why he was nervous about his bidding to begin with, because there was no guarantee on anything really, and there were no specifics on tonnage or anything, so. Usually, like, like in the past, we have a contract that we look at, and we bid on, based on what that contract is going to be, so. He's saying there is nothing that binds anybody to anything in this, as far as he can tell, other than the price that you agreed per household.
Sure, so, okay, so, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, A under one would be, you know, potentially debatable, or maybe that's what Matt's getting at. The second kind of option I came up with in talking with them was, you know, again, still not allowed the opt-out, so we could kind of say, hey, here's the whole contract for the whole city, and we know exactly what it is, and the billing is all simplified. But, you know, kind of in our utility sign-up here, this is what people come in, they sign up for utility, I did this the other day, and not one time was I told where to recycle at. I like to recycle, but I don't know where those options are. So I think that's just a basic city service, you know, and talking, you know, and Ken and I talked about this a little bit today, you know, we do have the, OCK recycling center, you know, obviously, we want to encourage people to patronize that, and I believe it's free of charge to use, but it's not, it's not really, you know, it's subsidized through our tax dollars, through those county citizens, you know, but we don't really polish, even as a community, when people sign up as a new resident or existing resident, hey, this is where you can do that. I think ultimately, it helps us take some of the, keep some of that out of Landville, which controls costs, I'm looking long-term. You know, the more we can keep out of there, you know, whether it's Dunston's in the future, Hydro now, whoever has the garbage hauling contract, that we're incentivizing people to utilize either that service, or, again, providing information of what Dunston offers, or whoever is offering recycling services, and what their price points are, so people know, hey, this is available, and potentially control our garbage costs long-term. So that's, you know, another option that we talked about, to kind of make a little bit more poignant, but, yeah, but.
You're still going to have your recyclers pick it up, aren't you? Well, we intend to, but we're just, we're just looking at it how we feel like the people who recycle should get a cheaper ta-
I mean, it shouldn't have to pay double when they're producing less tons of expensive trash.
Or they should have to be a lot less.
Was that what you guys are doing currently, though?
No, because the opportunity wasn't there. I mean, opportunity has been.
I guess my feeling is, we offered this out as a deal.
Right.
And it was bidable. Now we're the bad guys, is what it's looking like to me.
Your, your request for proposals basically was really pretty inadequate compared to anything I've ever been.
Compared to what the county proposed. Why, okay, run that by me.
Well, when we bid the county, we had, we had to, we had to bid agreement, like, our bid was an agreement that we would have three trucks, we would, we would pick up this amount of cans, we would pick it on these days, during these times, and dump at this time, you know, for this many households.
Exactly how many households was.
So you didn't know how many households you were bidding on for the city?
Well, they didn't specify anything.
They didn't specify anything, no.
You had no idea how many households.
How many households there were.
Have you been picking them up for how long?
Exactly, Ken, but, but your request for proposal didn't have any of that.
So what we're saying is there's nothing legally binding on the number of households.
You couldn't give us a tonnage of trash either.
Yeah, because we don't know.
Because we're trying to pick it up, but if they let you know, it would be you.
And I think, I think we need to back up, you know, I think to me, in our conversation on Monday, it was not necessarily talking about the bid. You know, so we came here tonight to really talk about the recycling thing, so, I think that's what we need to focus on.
I mean, to me, we've already decided that Hyzer has the bid. Now we're talking about.
I guess to me, it's more of a question of, do we allow the opt-out, do we allow, or, or no opt-out, and we're at least providing the information of where people can recycle, keep it out of landfill, and promote local businesses, and promote their service, not saying, oh, this is the best place ever, but.
To me, taking a percentage of the city out of the contract that was currently awarded is reducing their opportunity. We've made a deal with Hyzer for a hundred percent, and anything less than a hundred percent is changing the contract substantially, you haven't yet.
Well, and that's, that's what I said, he would have to be on board, he would obviously still have to get his five, whatever, five dollars and some cents per household. I mean, that's his profit. The rest of it is supposed to be towards, towards the landfill fee. So the only way I see to make this work is his landfill fee would be reduced, because these people are recycling. So, that's the way, and then, so they have, if that makes sense. What, and again, he's going to have to be on board, we have to figure out what that number is. But clearly, he still needs to be able to make his five dollars and whatever per house, that's what he bid on, that's his expected profit. I don't think we can, at this point, take that away from him. But I think you can reduce the landfill fee, because those houses are having less of an impact on the overall, but that is.
Were they getting that working?
No, and this is, I'm just not throwing this out, but that's the way, I don't think you can take a hundred and fifteen away from Jamie. But if you bring, and this is completely up to you guys, that's the way I see this, if this is something you want to consider, everybody to sit down at the same table and figure out what is that reduction in landfill fee, and then.
See, I can then start seeing people going, well, I recycle at the recycling center every single week, so I should get a discount on my trash services as well. I can see it opening up a can of worms that we're not going to be able to dig ourselves out of very easily.
That's built into your contract, you would have one contracted, I mean, they aren't going to be allowed to do that, you wouldn't allow them to do that, they would have to be using, but again, you do have people that use the OCCK, so they wouldn't have that benefit. But, yeah, you can't.
I mean, to me, if, if Dunstons are wanting to continue the recycling, I mean.
I was going to say, Susan and I, Susan and I have Dunstons, and they come pick it up every Monday.
And you.
Or every other Monday, and I pay, I pay for that. But I also pay for the, to have my trash picked up.
And sometimes we utilize the OCCK.
Yeah, and but you don't have near as much trash, do you?
No.
But, I mean, it's going to be the same amount of trash, whether you pick it up, or whether Hyzer picks it up.
No, just, if you split it out, it just gives somebody else an opportunity to make money off of you.
Say it again.
If you split it up, it just gives somebody else an opportunity to make money off of it.
Yeah, well, they, they are.
I mean, OCCK.
I mean, I'm getting billed, I'm getting billed for the trash, and I'm getting billed, have a contract with, with them to do my recycling.
Right, all we're, all we're wanting to propose is that somebody, in your case, or Katie's, that we try to save the landfill cost, because it's, the recycle is way cheaper to dispose of than the garbage, so we're just trying to save our recyclers money by trying to combine them both, ourselves, and save the, save the landfill fees.
See, I'm, I'm having trouble, like, Ken, I'm having trouble. We got this contract, and we're going to have a contract with Hyzer, and now all of a sudden, we're going to say, well, wait, you can't have that many, because somebody else.
That's why I just don't, I mean, we, that's why I just don't think we can allow this opt-out.
I think option number two makes the most sense, and the idea of potentially revisiting when the next contract comes up, adding in recycling into that possible deal in the future, and encouraging the current recycling, you know, that the options that we have.
I agree.
I would say too.
I think we need to promote green, just, as good start, you know, good starts of the environment, but opt-in out, that can be a pretty, pretty scary. I don't think we should. Because Dunstons are doing the, you know, they're doing the recycling, and on the back of Jamie's letter, it says here, you know, he gives on the back of his letter, extra services not included in monthly fees, add an additional cost to residents, and he lists all of them. You know, and one of them is, recycling services are currently not being offered, but are being negotiated between Hyzer and Trash Service in a separate contract. Well, that's his option, if he wants to do recycling, yeah, he can do that, you know, so then we may have three OCCK Dunstons, and then Hyzer. You know, so then people can choose, okay, if we want to recycle, here's our three options that you can recycle. So let's let, let's let that be of the citizens. I think this, on the recycling.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you recycle, you can, and Susan and I do the same thing. Dunston picks up our recycling, and has our green barrels, but once in a while, we have a full abundance of cardboard, or Susan cleans out a bunch of stuff in the basement, then we take it up to OCCK.
Council kind of liked option two. Man, I think if, like, again, this is something that everybody gets, if you're putting together a sheet in there, and you go from a hundred to two hundred.
Oh, sure.
I mean, is that, it's better than not.
Well, it just, it saves Hyzer the landfill fees, not our recycled customers.
Yeah, it's, it's him making the money off of it instead of the customer, and that's where money should be, is in the customer's pocket, not him.
Yeah, and that was the purpose of the bid.
It wasn't us.
No.
It wasn't us that brought this up, it's our customers that have been asking us, hey, can we get some sort of discount on the trash?
It's not, it's not.
What I'm getting at, Eric, was the bids that were left.
Exactly.
You guys bid on this particular pickup at the trash service, Hyzer bid on the regular. So.
We're just, we just wanted to present options, since we have an opportunity to start.
Customers. But I could, I could see for Mandy and her crew in there, as far as billing, well, this person is recycling, this person isn't recycling, you know, I can see that being.
Or the opt-in and opt-out, going back and forth.
We'll see that, I can see, well, whoever it is, picking up the trash.
Yeah.
I mean. For the recycle guy, just pass him by and go on, or, I mean.
Everybody else in the world has multiple tryers, so.
Yeah.
It's not that much of a hassle. We would have preferred not to be in the trash business.
Yes.
You'd have turned it over private, and then you'd be taken care of, you wouldn't have to mess with it at all.
Then there would have been no losers.
No losers there, that's what should have actually been done. But you guys got to it, and put it up for bid, before anybody even really got to talk about it. I was talking to Jay about it a long time ago, and then all of a sudden, it was going up for bid, nobody, you know, just kind of blindsided us off.
I think there's other towns that are going to do like a combination, some kind of a, like, lots of options and different.
But I think the way.
We just thought we'd throw it, hey, that's all.
Well, we appreciate you guys, and understand what your positions are, got to put you out of the top of the order.
Thanks for hearing us out.
Five, that is a five-year contract, right?
Yep.
I just, we just had a five-year contract about eight months ago with the Kennedy, so we don't know how that works.
Those don't work for much.
That's not on the papers right now.
We appreciate you hearing us out, though.
Sure. Like you guys.
Thanks, we appreciate your input.
Is there, Jason, anything else?
Um, I think that the only other thing, though, on the revised agenda a little bit, just to add the EMP2 electric cost adjustment, it's going to be coming down, we just got this information on Thursday, and had a phone conference call on Monday morning, so that's why it's kind of late, but it's a sheet right here, and basically what this is all about is, basically to be a part of this greater group, they have to make grid improvements elsewhere where they buy the power from, so this is kind of the, I almost relate to almost like an impact fee type of situation, it's calculated down based on how much power you've had to use, and those overcharges, or that overcapacity scenario goes, and they have to upgrade the line or the network upstream from here. And so, basically what this is, is we potentially will be on the hook for, the real dollar amount's about sixty thousand dollars. However, we were the only community, as you can see on this list, that had about fourteen thousand unreceivable, so that gets netted out to where we hold about forty-six thousand nine eighty-five. We do have a credit sitting there of twenty-four thousand nine thirty-five, and I talked to the. And I talked to the individual emailing this out, and I asked him, you know, what's the pros and cons of using that credit to offset? They kind of said that's an option, it's not a bad idea. The money there is not really earning anything, or it's not earning anything, excuse me. And really kind of what it's there for is a protection, because I guess some months, or sometimes, there could be a point where we need to have a little bit of money there to dip into if there's an overage or an overcharge or something to that effect. However, he said two and a half years, it's happened like one month, so it's not a huge risk. So, since it's just kind of, he said there's a lot of communities, as you can see here, there's a couple of communities like Pratt, Anthony, that don't even have that out yet, they just, they cash it out every month, because they can better use the money somewhere else than cut the backfill on through something every thirty, thirty months.